Okay, and then we can start letting people in.
Okay.
Hi, Marga.
Let's give it two more minutes. We need some theme music.
Now I'm unmuted. Good to see you.
Okay.
Some good neighbors here.
Thanks for joining. We had, I'm Beth Bannell from the Queen Anne Community Council. We had about 90 people signed up, so they'll probably just be coming in. We'll let them in, but why don't we go ahead and get started? If, you know, thank you for the community for coming out. Thank you, candidates. We call this a community conversation, so if you don't mind, we're going to be first names basis. Thanks, Ken and Teresa and Nikita and Sarah, and thank you as well, our moderator Erica Barnett, who most of you probably know as a long-term journalist, author, and co-founder of Public Hola. We're really fortunate to have you here, Erica, to moderate this. A few housekeeping notes. We are recording this. The recording will be on our website. Chat, we'll keep chat open. That will be something we use later when we're taking the live questions through chat, so, you know, feel free to use that when we're doing the Q and A. I did post in the chat, we're holding our next event, the mayoral and city attorney forum will be next week, same time. We're fortunate to have Erica come back, and we're super fortunate as well to have Jeff Sprung, who is the Assistant Attorney General for the State of Washington, to moderate the city attorney piece. I think that's going to be a really exciting event, so hopefully we'll see you all back there. I think without further ado, then Erica, I'll hand it over to you, and thank you all for coming.
Great, thanks, Beth. And in the interest of kind of moving this along, we have a very short amount of time with these candidates today. We're going to do Seattle City Council Position Eight first for 30 minutes, and then move on to the Seattle City Council Position Nine for 30 minutes. And so I want to just go ahead and welcome our candidates for Seattle Council Position Eight, where Kenneth Wilson is challenging incumbent Teresa Moscata. Ken and Teresa, welcome. We are going to, as I said, we're short on time, so we're going to forego opening statements and jump right into questions. You'll have an opportunity to give a closing statement at the end of today's forum, and each candidate will get 90 seconds to answer each question, and you will hear a little, what did we decide on? I believe you'll hear somebody say, you'll hear Paula say "time" when your time is up, so just go ahead and wrap up your thoughts. And at my discretion, I will allow candidates to follow up with brief follow-ups if they feel the need to jump in for 30 seconds, but please keep those to a minimum. And for the audience, we're going to have about a third of this conversation is going to be devoted to audience questions, so please put those in the chat, and I will be moderating them throughout the event, and we'll get to them for the last 10 minutes or so. All right, the first question is, we're going to go to Teresa first, and we're going to, same question for both candidates. As a citywide city council member, what changes will you make to develop a closer relationship between the city council and the neighborhoods you represent? For example, will you bring back city-sponsored district councils, and why or why not? Teresa?
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I see some of my neighbors from when I lived in Queen Anne. It's wonderful to see you. I'm wearing our favorite color, Marga, and I really want to appreciate the folks from the Queen Anne Council. I've had the chance to meet with you a few times over the years, in addition to being many of your neighbors. I'm Teresa Moscata, again, your Seattle City Council member, and part of what I have done in my term in office is to pass really important policies that support small businesses, workers, and progressive revenue, but I didn't do that alone. So part of the answer to the question is really making sure that we root policy decisions in neighborhood-driven desires. Having conversations, not by bringing people into City Hall, but by coming into community, is what I have done in the past. I understand the history with the neighborhood councils, and part of the reason that I think that folks were looking at a different model under the Murray administration is try to create a more diverse and inclusive way to solicit feedback. We can still do that, no matter the title. It means resources and commitment to making sure that we're getting feedback from the community. For example, in the community that I lived in in Queen Anne on 10th Avenue West, there was renters, there was long-term homeowners, there was new folks to the neighborhood, and there's people who'd been there for generations. I want to make sure that we're hearing the diverse voices of folks, communities of color, our elders, youth who are in the neighborhoods, and working families, to make sure that all of our policies, from land use to making sure we're creating more housing, to making sure that we're creating equitable development, are rooted in those community opportunities. I will invest more in making sure that there's the resources for Department of Neighborhoods to do so. That's my commitment to you.
Ken, and do you want me to re-repete the question?
I think I have that question. Thanks so much, Erica. So absolutely, the main thing is our function. So again, I'm Kenneth Wilson. I'm a civil engineer, and I'm running for your Council Eight position. I've a 28-year resident, 30 years as a civil engineer working on projects, and hopefully you got out to see that Northgate Bridge, which was an important part of my work right there for you, and I was out there, so hopefully maybe some of you saw me. The most important thing that our council does is connect with this community group. We are your leaders, we're your voice, we're your decision-makers, and we have to have you involved. So the main thing where they hide in this tower downtown needs to stop. We need to actually start having council at the communities, go straight to you, and give you points that you can actually interact with us. It's not, it doesn't need to be pre-prompted questions that you have to give us in advance. Oftentimes, questions come from the discussion. It should be an open dialogue, something that we're getting your feedback so that we can understand. We are making decisions for you, so just sitting there to listen to them is not enough. We actually have to interact with you, take real questions, and not have a prompt where I'll decide which questions are going to show up. This needs to be an interactive element, and you saw even that community in Ballard, beautiful community centers. We should be using them and coming directly to you. We should be at times that are valuable to the community, that they can interact and give us this feedback that's valuable. So I would bring that immediately back to these people. Start including them in that fashion, for sure.
Fine.
Next question. Thanks for keeping to time. Teresa, you sponsor the Jump Start Payroll Tax to fund homelessness, housing, and Green New Deal spending. Do you believe this funding will be sufficient, or will you propose additional new taxes in the future if you're re-elected?
Thank you for this question. This is one of the pieces of policies that I think really show how I sit in the seat at City Council. We all, I think, are progressives of various shades of blue, and we all, I know, want to see more for our community, including investments in small business, Green New Deal, and housing. I want that same thing, but I pulled together a broad coalition to make this possible. We pulled together folks from labor and business, housing, and community to really create a progressive, progressive policy on the largest salaries, on those largest companies who are doing well in this post-pandemic world. That's $235 million, according to the newest estimates, and 2/3 of that funding goes into the most pressing issue in our city, and that is creating more affordable housing for folks to move into, move it from the shelters and into housing, and move off of the streets and into housing or shelter. We're creating opportunities for folks through economic development and Green New Deal investments, but $235 million a year with 2/3 of that going into housing is a really important investment, coupled with county investments into homelessness and housing is a good start. But we know that we need about, up towards $1 billion a year for affordable housing in our region. All of that can't come on the back of Seattle, obviously, but it is an important indication that we have made important steps, but there is more that needs to be done. I think in the wake of COVID, there is an opportunity for us to look at those areas that have done the best in the post-COVID world, and to see how we can continue to work to build on progressive revenue. I know there's a lot of conversation about an income tax with an important addition, which is the working families rebate. I'm very much committed to that and looking at other strategies, so we can scale up our investments in our most vulnerable, our infrastructure, childcare, and senior care, along with food security across our city, and that may require additional revenue, which I'm also committed to, but it has to be done in a progressive, collaborative way, which I've shown I can do, and will do again with you.
I'm. Thank you. And Kenneth, slightly different question. Do you support the Jump Start Payroll Tax, and what's your top priority for those funds?
Oh, all right, thank you. And that is a different question than you gave to her. The idea that we keep handing out this word "progressive," "progressive," and statements of these taxes are to our advantage is not correct at all. So this progressive statement of a tax that affects these businesses, absolutely not. So right now, we're in the middle of very steep challenges. We have safety issues that are forcing a recovery stop for many of our businesses that can't find employees. Who's going to be the employee that's going to have to defend that system from so many challenges happening in unsafe situations? So no, I think the idea that we're having a huge tax showing up right in this next year that's going to actually push the recovery and damage our businesses, many of these businesses, we talk about online and technical people that are adding to our community, but in reality, those are mobile situations that they will just leave and move out of our situation. They won't wait for us to come back. So it's up to us to actually start making real activity now, deal with our homeless, deal with our safety issues, start building back plans. I don't agree with this idea of taxing, and give me more money so I can find a way to use it. A billion dollars, that's what we're going to do for housing for everyone. Is that really what's going to work? So a lot of things, they're not thinking about the ramifications of creating these used taxes, or what happens to the money? We give them money, and we don't see anything. For the last four years, we've known the homeless challenge. We're seeing federal dollars coming in, and what are they doing? They're actually going after it as, oh, this is like outreach, $3 million studies. They need to be actually accountable to us.
All right. This is a question, I'm sort of synthesizing some questions from Queen Anne Community Council members submitted before this debate started. Parts of Seattle, including much of 3rd Avenue, have long been sites of drug activity, an issue that has become more pronounced during pandemic as businesses have closed. And I know this is also a hot topic for the Queen Anne Community Council because of the Hilltop Motel in your neighborhood. What is the first step you would take to address sites of concentrated drug activity? And we'll start with Kenneth on this one.
Sorry, I was on mute. This is the most important thing. All things in our city are functioning without proper safety. And so right now, what we're talking about is a fire that's happening at the hotel. We're having areas where we're not enforcing existing laws. The first thing we need to do is start enforcing our existing laws that are on the book. Build back the police so that we can have public safety for our people. So the people that live here already had bought into the system where they expected as a business, as a homeowner, that you would have levels of safety. My daughter doesn't even want to walk up the street to Lincoln High School without me. Can you just come walk with me? Can you bring the dog? You know, can you pick me up? She's at cheer, and coming back at 6 o'clock, it's not even dark yet. There's public safety issues that prevent all these communities from functioning correctly, and we're not enforcing laws. We're cutting, this council is cutting your budget for police, and for people that can actually make a response. Chief Diaz knows where the challenges are, but he has not been able to put patrols in those areas because he has no funding. He doesn't have police to do it. How do you even maintain the police that you have? There's no encouragement in this situation where they can actually maintain a safe, comfortable level of staff. All the best staff, and you know this, would leave because they're best, they're best qualified, they will easily find another job. And one thing they're not telling you is that this is millions of dollars they've invested in our existing missing 300 police officers, because it's $100,000 to train every one, and now they're gone. We have to pay for that all over again. They're not telling you correctly.
Teresa?
Thanks, Erica. I think the question you asked was really about a public health issue, a public health issue that's facing our nation along with COVID. The crisis of folks who are self-medicating and addicted to substances at this point is a national crisis that we are seeing play out right here in Seattle. The other corresponding public health crisis is the lack of access to housing and appropriate shelter. Both of these things go hand in hand. During the COVID crisis, we also unfortunately saw the shutting down of our high-acuity beds for extreme mental health and addiction issues in our city, because a lot of those were mats on the floor, congregate shelters. We did not, as a city, scale up the hotels needed along with the health services to go with it. We are seeing that continue to manifest in our streets. So what I have done as a single council member, acting in partnership with the mayor and public health, and King County, has been to put funding directly into hotel, tiny houses, and additional emergency services for folks like D E S C, Downtown Emergency Support Services, so that we can couple health with housing services. If we can get folks inside and get them housed, we can help get them onto a road to behavioral health remedies, including addiction treatment. This is one of the biggest crises facing our country, and I have, as a public health, with a background in public health, have worked with our Public Health Department and King County to help couple housing with healthcare. I'll also say that funding from Jump Start is part of the solution. With permanent supportive housing, receiving 2/3 of the funding, that means that a health and case manager goes along with the housing, and our business community has said that what they need is for folks to stop sleeping on their doorstep and in park, and getting them into housing is part of that solution.
I appreciate just a quick rebuttal, if I may.
Happy you have 30 seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we had a rebuttal, then I'd like to go back to an earlier comment.
Okay, sorry, I tried to explain that at the beginning, and I apologize if I breezed past that. If you want to respond, just raise your hand, and just, at my discretion, you know, you can have 30 seconds, just remembering that we only have 30 minutes, so.
Right, right. And you did actually state that at the beginning when you talked about the time. So one very important thing. So we're talking about, as you heard in the response, buying and providing homes and shelters for everyone. These are not children. These are actual people, and you're belittling the type of people these are, that they just need help, and they need to be pushed and helped themselves so that they can graduate out of this program. To just hand them housing is a foolish thing to pretend to do. We actually have to help enforce laws and get them to go along with us to do things better for both of us.
Fine.
And Teresa, did you want to respond to something else?
Yeah, I apologize. Folks, I want to go back to a comment that was, I think, it needs to be corrected, about Jump Start, and it's data-driven, and it's rooted in news and in the headlines as well. When we look at Jump Start Progressive Seattle, not only are over 60% of Seattleites supporting it specifically when they're asked about Jump Start and a payroll progressive tax, it is also showing that it is not causing businesses to leave. In fact, we're seeing more folks coming to open businesses in Seattle, especially high-tech industries. We have over a dozen new startup companies in the high-tech sector, and I think that's an indication that it's not scaring people away, and it's going to be good for everyone.
Thank you. And just want to remind folks, you can leave questions in the chat, and I will get to them at the end of the forum, which is going to be in just a couple of minutes. So for the last 10 minutes or so, I'll pose your questions. Next question is, we'll start with Teresa. The city council has reduced funding for SPD somewhat, but alternative programs for responding to people in crisis have not been stood up yet. How will you expedite these programs as a city council member, and is there a particular program you would prioritize as part of rethinking how the city responds to people in crisis or who need social services?
Thank you so much, Erica. Well, in partnership with some of the investments that the mayor had suggested from last year, the council has combined efforts to try to invest into alternative responses to policing. We know we don't need a gun and a badge when people are having a mental health crisis. We know we don't need a gun and a badge when somebody needs access to housing services and health services. We need to be helping get folks into care versus a revolving door, either at our jails or Harperview. That comes directly from the firefighters who have endorsed me. That comes from the human service providers who are working with me on solutions, and what we need to be doing is making sure that we are scaling up alternatives to policing as we right-size our investments. With the mayor's investments and the county's council investments, we've invested over $100 million. Of that preventative grant, safety grants have gone out the door. The mayor's task force has been fully funded. The participatory budgeting, we're receiving the reports, and it's going out now. So we are scaling those up along with the firefighter's priority, which is the Health One team, which I've taken from one van to three vans, and I hope to do two more next year, and we've invested in the Triage One proposal as well from the mayor's office. These are critical investments, along with direct dollars into communities who have been disproportionately impacted by public safety issues, to make sure that they're getting the dollars in hand as well. It's an important balance, and I think that we're on the right track. We have absolutely funded the mayor's full request for officers from last year. The full hiring plan was funded, and so now we're scaling up community alternatives at the same time.
Thank you. Ken? Same question.
All right. Could you read just the?
Sure. The council has reduced funding for SPD, but alternative programs for responding to people in crisis haven't been stood up yet. How will you expedite these programs?
Absolutely. So in particular, to me, that, the main thing is that they have been defunded, and most importantly, we keep talking about, oh, they don't have, show up with a gun. There's a non-emergency police number. You don't have to dial 911. And as I've said before, the police are so understaffed right now that they're having the actual fire department, like she said, is having to do health issues and come and respond to calls for homeless and issues that isn't their natural purview, but not everyone has to show up with a gun, and actually, police do a good job about that. There's other non-emergency ways to do this call as well. So what's going on is we need to actually refund or fund the police correctly so that they can function. Try and keep these people that are staff, stabilize the situation, and give us an opportunity to build alternate situations that do make sense. We should have alternate paths for homelessness to be addressed and actually dealt with. It doesn't have to be a 911 call. So there are things that we could and should be doing, but that could be done underneath the police in the non-emergency number as well. And you should put the non-emergency number in your phone number, in your phone. 911's not for everything.
Okay. Last question from me, and then we'll turn to audience questions. The city council recently did away with the term "single-family zoning." Teresa, that was your legislation, in favor of neighborhood residential, and has allowed the construction of more accessory dwelling units on single-family properties. Would you support allowing additional changes to single-family zoning? And if so, what would your first piece of legislation be to increase the amount of density allowed in those areas? And if not, why not?
Wonderful. So the legislation is actually up for a vote on Monday. Would love to have your thoughts, and anybody who wants to call in to change the name only. This is a name only to be more inclusive, and part of that comes from my living experience in Queen Anne. For over six years, I lived there in an apartment next to other apartments, next to a single-family home, next to condos, and houses that were divided into duplexes, triplexes. Even some of those doors had more than three entrances, and we love our neighborhood in Queen Anne, and that's why I think that the term "single-family" alone is a misnomer, and it's been recommended since 2018 from the Seattle Planning Commission, that we change our name to be more inclusive. That's what this step is. The first thing I would tell folks is that in order for us to take any steps from there, we have to have conversations with community. In 2022 is our opportunity to have in-depth conversations, like the first question asked about, in community, to talk about what do we want to do to try to create more inclusive or affordable Seattle? Are there zoning changes that can take place? And then that can lead to our 2023 comp plan. But it is important to note that I use Queen Anne as a great example of a neighborhood that we love, that at its roots is actually more inclusive than the name "single-family" would allow you to think, and that's why I want to name that. It's truly reflective of the diversity of housing types and the community that we want to see, and I'm excited for this first step. And the next step would be that conversation directly with community.
Ken?
This idea that zoning, and you have to change all this zoning to make sure that you have affordable housing, is absolutely wrong. Single-family has to do with zoning and function, how we work. If you have a zone where you suddenly decide, just like we did in Wallingford, Paula has done nothing for the affordability of housing, but somehow you can take down one house and build five. You could take down one and build six, no parking. And so these issues become, what do you do with all these extra units providing into the same exact sewer? What happens to all those families that now need a car? Who doesn't need a car to drive your kid to soccer practice? So wait and see. So what's going on is function. So when you take away all the function, nothing is working correctly. You're actually destroying the function there. You should be focusing on materials and areas where you can get benefits between both sides. They can still use and protect the trees in our neighborhoods, and still have materials that you can make a more walkable neighborhood, value to it. But this is a fool's errand to kind of tear apart all the single-family. That's really, and we should be all about protecting neighborhoods, and that's absolutely what you would get from me.
All right, this is an audience question, actually relates to your answer, Ken. What will you do to ensure that exceptional trees are not being cut down in order to achieve more density? We'll start with Teresa.
Thank you. Yesterday, I had the chance to join a ribbon-cutting ceremony with Habitat for Humanity, and I thought it was a great, visible example of what I always say. We can create greater density by protecting our trees and growing our tree canopy. Where once stood a single-family home as a standalone on a parcel of property was turned into 13 homes around a community courtyard, protecting old-growth trees. It was a great example of where elders and kiddos are going to be able to use that space in the future, and we've created more opportunities for folks to live in the neighborhood. I've long advocated for greer setbacks, so we can have tree canopies that line our streets to protect people from cars so that they can more safely walk and ideally bike as well, and that's good for our communities. And when we know that we have higher rates of trees in high-opportunity neighborhoods and fewer trees in low-income neighborhoods, this is an imperative that we create those trees, and we can do both higher-density setbacks, allowing for greater tree canopies across our city, and the two are not in conflict. When we don't create opportunities for folks to live in our city, it encroaches on forests and farmland and wetlands. The best thing that we can do for an environment is allow for density in our city while creating a tree canopy. That's why I'm endorsed by the Sierra Club and Washington Conservation Voters, because of those environmental justice principles that I put into our housing and zoning conversations.
Sorry, Erica, you're on mute.
I was muted.
I do understand the question. Let me just go ahead and jump right in. So this is actually one of the founding items of my campaign in general, is protecting trees and the environment through protecting our trees, that are critical to how our city functions. They grab carbon, they hold heat, and there are ways that we can actually build them back better, but most importantly, I don't want you, as a community, to lose fact of these councils have had many, many chances to review and deal with this many, many times, and every time, turn it into a long study that goes nowhere. So quite frankly, that's not what I'm going to do. Protecting trees is fundamental to our area, and as we keep saying, we see this, and we talk about it at a national level, but this is local. We have to deal with our things local here. This is what we can affect and can do something with, and so absolutely, I would be protecting trees. I would make sure our ordinance reflects that. I'd make sure it was enforced, and most importantly, you can develop. I think Teresa did make a good point there. You can develop smartly around it, plan smart. Then we can actually dream big and have this protective city canopy that's so valuable to us all. So I'm not about talk. You can see all the things that I build in the city, and my name on a lot of engineering. We're about getting things done, and that's an important platform for me. I'm going to take it from studies and turn it into something real. Thanks.
All right, this will be our last question before we go into closing statements. Someone wants to know, do you support drug, boy, that's a hard word to say. Do you support drug decriminalization legislation and/or safe consumption sites? And we'll start with Ken.
No, I don't. I think that this kind of goes back to our same challenge that we have in front of us today. In my view, is that we have misdemeanors that are being allowed by the council and directed by the mayor to allow to happen, and they sound like small things, but misdemeanors are discharge of a weapon. These are actually menacing and breaking people's windows day after day. This is real crime, so I don't want to belittle the challenges that we have with drug issues. We actually need to head out straight on with that and help people get out of these addictions and become more functional for our society. We have already legalized certain drugs. You saw marijuana, but no, I don't encourage or accept that that's a good path forward at all.
Thank you for this question. Again, I come from public health. My first job was at Department of Health. I've worked in community health clinics throughout my time at Children's Alliance, Fighting for Healthcare for Everyone, and then the State Labor Council on the Health Insurance Exchange Board, and fought for the passage here in our city. Health is core to the conversation around addiction, and a harm reduction model means helping to make sure that people can reduce any barriers to getting access to treatment and getting off of the substance that they're using. That is the conversation that we had 30 years ago when safe needle exchanges were first discussed. There was a lot of resistance then, and safe needle exchanges now are accepted as one of the best ways to help get folks not only in the door and free from disease, but to get them off drugs to begin with. Some of the models that we're looking at with public health are in partnership to try to create safe spaces for people to come inside so that they can then get the counseling assistance that they need to get off. so that they can then get the counseling assistance that they need to get off substances to begin with. Right now, we have folks who are using substances in our parks, in our alleyways. I would like to make sure that we're actually helping bring folks inside and get them off of those substances to begin with. So that's what I've been focused on with public health. They're implementing some funding that I allocated for them last year. And I have been working to make sure that folks know the difference between decriminalization and legalization. Decriminalizing the use of certain substances helps make sure that fewer folks, especially folks from communities of color, are not targeted for use of substances when I think that has been erroneously used as a justification to pull people over and arrest people in the past. So it's really through this public health lens, a decriminalizing lens, that I come to this.
I will just take a few seconds. The statements here were about healthcare and allowance for safe needle. I don't agree with any of these things at all. What's going in that needle? So you're concerned about a safe needle, and yet you're incentivizing and allowing a terrible habit from where did they get these drugs? All these items are just wrong, absolutely wrong.
All right, we are going to go to closing statements. And we will start with Ken and then finish up with Teresa. You have two minutes for a closing statement or to respond to anything you didn't get a chance to respond to.
That's fine, and I'll be brief as possible. I know we've run over a few times here. But most importantly, what I want to be in front of you here today is, as I said, I'm a bridge structural engineer. There's plenty of great projects I can work on. Something is really wrong with this city. What's happening? We are a world-class city. All of us know that. That's why we're here today. It takes a little different where we get pushed out of our comfort zone and now start becoming political. We're seeing ghetto-type paintings everywhere. We're seeing crime and other things that are being allowed to let go. This is an amazing city full of innovations. And I talked about even in my little videos about the bridges that are 100 years old and still functioning for all these places. We have so many great companies here from Weyerhauser and Starbucks and Microsoft. This is a town that we deserve better. This council has let, this is the worst public safety on memory. Every one of these actions are cause and effect. You can see where the council has taken away funding, creating a cause where now we have no police. And the police that were good will leave. What about the other issues? Homeless. They knew this was a problem for years. And now they're asking for you to give them more money so they can go and do what? Have the exact same plan as before. We can't keep going plan as usual. This is about accountability, making sure that these decisions that they have made on our behalf are now accounted for. I'm an engineer. I'm very analytical. I'm a small business owner since 2005. I work hard problems, and I'm here to do work on these hard problems as well. I have real solutions, protecting our tree canopy, lasting support for our police and public safety, and getting the homeless moved and graduated out of what the situation is for them. I ask for your vote, and I'd really appreciate your consideration.
Teresa?
Thank you, Erica. I do want to say at the beginning, I think the term ghetto-type paintings, as someone who says they're analyticals, should analyze how that statement is not a good thing to be saying. And really, the roots that come behind that statement, I think, are problematic. I also didn't interrupt you, and I didn't speak over you. So I do want to thank you for your time in hosting today's conversation and say that there was one point that I wanted to come back to regarding public safety. The data that I'm looking at regarding Police Department funding and community service investments is rooted in police data itself. 80% of the calls that are coming to the Seattle Police Department have been tagged as noncriminal in nature. That comes from the Seattle Police Department's own data and analyst analysis, along with the mayor commission. So we're looking at this data that is coming in to say if these are noncriminal in nature, we need to have a noncriminal-associated response. And that's where the conversation is really rooted. And 12% of the existing calls today, SPD's own data has said, could be handed off to someone else. And that's the process we're working on. It is an important balance that's being taken care of, being addressed at the national level. And for me, this is exactly the moment that I'm asking to come back. I'm aware of the incredible crises that are affecting not only Seattle, but our country as a whole. As a public health analyst, as someone who stood with members of the community, both our elders and our kiddos, folks who are fighting for good living wage jobs, as small-business owners and workers, I have come together to tackle some of our most pressing problems prior to COVID. In the last two years, we've worked to get cash assistance out, rental assistance, mortgage assistance, making sure folks had food deliveries for our elders. And that is why I want to come back, not because this is an easy job, right? But because this is exactly why I signed up for public service, to bring people together, to not sling mud, to find solutions, fund those solutions, and move forward in a more equitable way. I do hope to have your support again. I know these crises that are affecting us are incredibly challenging, and that's why I hope to have your support citywide again so I can get back to work and find these solutions and put them forward with you at the center. Thank you for everything you do. I really appreciate all the advocacy that Queen Anne Community Council does. And I will leave it at that.
All right, thank you so much to both of you, our candidates for District Eight or for Position Eight. And you're welcome to stick around and watch Position Nine. Or if not, thank you both for your time today. And we're going to switch right over to go into Position Nine. Let's get Nikita and Sarah up here. All right.
Everyone?
Hello. Okay, so you both heard the spiel, but I'll do it real quickly again. It's going to be 90 seconds for questions for the first 20 minutes or so. And if you want to respond to something your opponent said, just give me a heads up. And if we have time, I'll give you 30 seconds. And we'll do about 20 minutes of questions, and then I will go back into the chat. There are some questions that folks put in the chat for all candidates, so I'm still holding on to some of those. But do feel free to submit questions in the chat if you're watching, and I will see them. So, and then we'll have two minutes at the end for closing statements, and we're not doing opening statements. So with that, I'm going to jump into the questions. First question is for both of you. The candidates for mayor and city attorney offer starkly different visions for the city. For example, to Nikita, Bruce Harrell has said he wants to expand the police department. And to Sarah, Lorraine Gonzalez has said that she wants to end homeless encampment removals until there's adequate places for people to go. What is your plan for working with the mayor or city attorney with whom you disagree strongly or don't share the exact same values? And we will start with Nikita.
Thank you. I think it's really significant to start first with what is the role of the Seattle City Council? Our job is to function as the legislative branch, putting in place good ordinances that get us towards our city and regional goals, developing a balanced budget that is both responsive to the current crises that we are in, and then ensuring that that response is focused on a greater vision of things like housing affordability and sustainability, public safety through a public health approach, and developing our workforce and moving out of the COVID-19 pandemic in a way that acknowledges that prior to the pandemic, many people were already in crisis. I say that because as the legislative branch, one thing we cannot do is force the executive to do things like cash checks that we may send up. So an example of that is the dollars that were not allocated for hand-washing stations by the current mayor. And so I think it's most important that as a citywide representative, I focus on the things that those who got me elected are basically asking me to do when they vote for me, holding to those principles, being accountable and transparent about how we're arriving to decisions, and then sending that to the mayor, as is my role through the legislative branch. In terms of the city attorney, I hope that whomever is elected will do things like defend our progressive revenue legislation, will ensure that we have municipal court focuses that actually get us out of crisis and do not criminalize poverty. And again, thank you, Erica.
Sarah, same question. Let me know if you want me to repeat it, both of you.
So I served as councilmember Richard Conlin's legislative aide for close to 10 years. And so I worked under three different mayoral administrations. Greg Nichols and Mike McGinn and a bit of Murray. And there was a different culture between the executive and the council for every different administration and makeup of the councils. So there may be a built-in rivalry between the executive and the council when it comes to taking credit for initiatives that work and then pointing fingers at things that don't work. But here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to start with the assumption that we want the best for the city. And it will be my responsibility to try to forge a good relationship with whoever is in the mayor's seat. And that starts with basically forming relationships with the mayor and the mayor office staff, and also open communication. So when it comes down to an initiative that I'm proposing, and if it's a major legislative lift, I want to make sure that I am working with the executive staff that will be responsible for implementing it. So I'll check in before getting too far down the line. And when it comes to implementing or allocating funding, because council has the power of the purse, the mayor's initiatives, I want to make sure that as that initiative was developed, that my voice is heard and that my constituents who might have an issue or the stakeholders that are going to be directly impacted have a seat at the table. And so it's really about process and less about the politics of the person in that seat. And I will be, I'll be operating on the principle that I'm serving the people of Seattle. And what works for the people of Seattle is that the executive--
Sarah, I apologize for, I paused. You were muted because your time is up. Can you hear us okay, Sarah? Okay, okay, great. So yeah, please respect the time. When the timer says time, just wrap up your--
Oh, I was talking too loud. I didn't hear the timer.
Oh, okay, yeah. Wrap up your thoughts when you hear--
Okay, I'm sorry.
--your time. Okay, and you'll have an opportunity at the end to add anything you want in those two minutes. Next question, we'll start with Sarah. The city council has reduced funding for SPD to some extent, but alternative programs for responding to people in crisis have not been stood up yet. How will you expedite those programs as a city council member? And is there a particular program you would prioritize as part of rethinking how the city responds to people in crisis?
Yeah, I think, I am unmuted. Okay. I believe that there is no disagreement that offices are often responding to calls that they're not equipped to deal with, and that social service professionals should be responding to people in crisis. There is no disagreement about this, and so what we have to do is build capacity on the social service side. The mayor has $2 million allocated for Triage One. That's great. I think it's going to cost a lot more money than that, but I will support that. And when it comes to contracting with other providers that can better deal with these calls, you know, accountable benchmarking for is going to be important so we make sure that those calls are being responded to well. I am endorsed by the Seattle firefighters, and I fully support Health One. That was one of the long questions in my questionnaire, and I believe that we should have a lot more of those because that is a model that works. And I'll be looking forward to seeing other ways that we can make sure that those kinds of calls are dealt with by trained professionals. I do not believe that the funding for those contracts should come out of the Seattle Police Department because Seattle Police Department is struggling with a staffing shortage. Even if you take all those calls out, we saw during the weekend in July when there were three shootings that officers were being called from all over the city to respond, leaving the people living in those precincts vulnerable.
Thank you. Nikita?
Yeah, so in 2021, the National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform, which specializes in reducing incarceration and gun violence, took three years of Seattle Police Department 911 call data and found that 80% of calls are noncriminal responses. And in the future, it would be appropriate for up to 49% of calls to receive an alternative nonsworn response. So we are actually moving in the right direction based on our own data, scaling up Health One, scaling up the mayor's proposal of Triage One, and through a nearly $13 million investment this past year in scaling up community-based responses. Something that I would like us to see as a city is scaling up our behavioral health support. So we are woefully dependent upon the King County system for providing folks with things like mental health or crisis mental health supports, as well as supports for those who use drugs. And at the city level, with having 770,000 community members, we would really benefit from leveraging a progressive revenue option to actually build out our own behavioral health support system, which would be a public health response to public safety issues. I do think that, given the data, knowing that 49% of calls need an alternative response, it does make sense to utilize some of SPD's funding to build that out. And that is just based sheerly on the numbers and is reflected in research that Seattle Police Department asked for itself.
I would like 30 seconds, please.
Sure.
I think it's important to note that my opponent wants to abolish the police. And when we're talking about any kind of police response, we do need, you know, well-trained officers to respond to calls, no matter what they are. I mean, I'm talking about any calls that come into 911. Until we get this other system amplified, we need to make sure we've got adequate police protection in every district of the city as Article Six in the Charter sets.
Nikita, would you like to respond? I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I think Sarah calls me out for being an abolitionist as an attempt to say that I support extremist policies. I'm not saying that we would abolish the police tomorrow or even in a few years. But I do think understanding that it is a failed system of response to many of the crises that face our residents should tell us that if we're both fiscally responsible and truly about anti-violence work, we would work our way out of an ineffective system and build one that actually serves the needs that are coming in to our 911 emergency response system.
All right. Got a question. I'm going to actually combine a question that you might have heard last time with another question. You know, there's a lot of various parts of Seattle have become sites of concentrated drug activity. And at the same time, property crimes remain a major concern. What is your plan for responding to and, you know, perhaps deterring property crime and responding to concentrated drug activity? And let's start with Nikita.
Similarly to Teresa, I come from a public health background of responding to crisis in a way that addresses what is the root cause of the harm? How do we stop the root cause? How do we heal those involved? And how do we change the conditions that we are facing to prevent that from ever happening again? That's what I mean by being about anti-violence. Really thinking about in the city, our strategies include things like investments in our preschool and summer job programs for economically marginalized youth to ensure they never end up in that pipeline. Fully funding hospital-based intervention programs, case managers, peer navigators, and doing things like having discharge plans when people exit hospitals or even the jails so that we know they're actually going to a safer space. Expanding our violence interruption programs, like the Regional Peacekeepers Initiative and the Seattle Community Safety Initiative. Raising wages and having access to unionized benefited jobs is a pro-labor policy that is also anti-violence and is a public health approach to public safety. And then increasing our access to behavioral health supports, as I already stated. Similar to Teresa, I also think that growing our housing options in conjunction with our behavioral health and drug addiction supports is key. It is very hard to address issues of addiction when you still do not have a stable place to live. And in fact, not having a home to live in exacerbates the likelihood that a person will begin to use and then become drug addicted.
Sarah?
Well, just to rejoin her from the previous question, extremist policies. Your solidarity budget is advocating for 50% defund this year or next year and the abolishment of the municipal court. So anyway, on drugs, I was at the C.D. Panthers football games yesterday, and I was asking people, what would you tell city council right now that you want? And one guy said, "recriminalize drugs." So I'm listening, so, you know, I believe that a huge missing piece in our homelessness response strategy and in general is that Seattle does not fund mental health and substance abuse treatment. This is a huge missing, this is a huge gap, and we've got to do something about this. And the Jump Start spending plan does not allocate any money for this. And until we start addressing addiction and encampments, this is going to be perpetuated because people fall deeper into addiction if they have a vulnerability to that in encampments. And so we have to be able to admit that homelessness is not simply a function of housing unaffordability, that there is a behavioral health component, and we have to get serious about this. So, and as for, what did you say, drug, oh, and safe injection sites? Like I just said, our priority should be on treatment. And the first drug injection site was estimated to cost $6 million, and there was only one. The effect, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. And Nikita, we're gonna bounce back to you for a 30-second response, and then we're gonna cut it off there because I wanna I wanna go on to a couple other questions. So Nikita, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to clarify about the solidarity budget. Solidarity budget is work that I do as a part of my job as Executive Director at Creative Justice. It has over 100 community-based organizations signed on. And so it's not a policy that Nikita Oliver has self-generated, but it's actually a policy that many organizations from cross-sector, from environment to transportation to housing to the criminal punishment system have all generated a budget to recommend to the city.
Thank you. Moving on to parks, Seattle is known for its parks and open spaces. During the pandemic, funding for parks maintenance and programs was cut, and the parks levy was repurposed to spend on basic needs. Meanwhile, park resources increasingly went toward responding to encampments. What will you do to ensure that the Parks Department has adequate funding to preserve and maintain our parks and green spaces? And let's start with Sarah.
Well, basic services are one of my top priorities in this campaign. And you're right, basic services have been inadequately funded, not just this past year, but for years. And so we have to make sure that our parks are well-maintained, clean, and safe. But we also have a Parks Department, a Parks District, and that's a property tax that is being paid, and it's being spent with very little oversight. The council has not met as the Parks District for a very long time, so they're not overseeing a spending plan. The the Advisory Council is upset that the project list for that plan for parks, for all that money that's coming in as your property taxes, has not been transparently allocated or spent. And if we keep diverting funds from one bucket to pay for something else because we don't have an adequate plan for dealing with homelessness, all of our basic services will suffer.
Nikita?
Yeah, so just a few things that I think are important to lay the foundation for this discussion is that money from parks was not actually cut. It was redirected because during the pandemic, there were certain things that parks could not do, like events inside with groups. So those dollars were redirected to address other issues, which I just think is fiscally responsible. And I think it's also worth noting that the city council did restore some of the personnel cuts that the mayor proposed. So I think those are significant contexts. That being said, if you look at the mayor's 2022 budget, there are actually dollars specifically specified for the purpose of continuing the inhumane practice of sweeps. And I think that if we want our parks to be accessible and we want to ensure that people get housed, we want to do things that keep our parks clean while simultaneously ensuring that peer navigators know where to find folks who have typically been living in parks and to be scaling up our non-congregate shelter options that allow people to move from parks inside, but acknowledging that if we sweep them, we make it incredibly hard for peer navigators to find them once housing becomes available. So I propose that we utilize those dollars instead for things like radical accessibility, providing hygiene support, trash support, and ensuring that there are regular case managers and peer navigators in the parks so we can show we actually don't want people living outside, and we want to do the the work of keeping people safe, both who visit our parks and those who right now are being forced because the city has failed to adequately respond to housing affordability and homelessness crisis. They're being forced to stay in parks.
Thank you. And Sarah, I saw you raising your hand.
My opponent calls, yeah, so my opponent calls for more for the creation of a fund within the Seattle Parks Department to to basically allow for the permanent encampment in 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 parks, more sanitation for people living in parks. And and so again, we're diverting money to a an issue that is better dealt with otherwise. And so the question was, what are you gonna do to backfill the money that's already been spent on homelessness? My opponent wants to spend more.
Thank you. And Nikita, you have 30 seconds to respond to that, and then I wanna I wanna get a couple more questions in.
Absolutely. And Sarah, my name is Nikita, not my opponent. But what I would like to say is there's actually a fund already in Seattle Parks and Rec being proposed in the 2022 budget specifically for the purpose of sweeps. So those dollars already exist. What I'm proposing is rather than using them to sweep people, we use them specifically to ensure that our parks are much cleaner until we have a very significant strategy of making sure our residents without homes have safer places to go.
All right, the city council recently did away with the term "single-family zoning" in favor of neighborhood residential. That's just still language change, as Teresa pointed out. But but I'm wondering if you would support additional changes to single-family zoning itself? And if so, what would your first piece of legislation be? And if not, why not? And let's start with Nikita.
Yes, I do support making changes to single-family zoning. I think getting all of our language in alignment, the work that Teresa is already doing around changing things to neighborhood residential is important, but it's certainly not far enough. So as we move into our 2024 comprehensive plan, we really need to to do the work of ensuring that multifamily units and apartments can exist within our single-family, currently single-family zoned areas. I know that Sarah will say we've already ended single-family zoning, and while that might be, and in some ways true, what we absolutely have not done is end the apartment ban. And in fact, because of the way that UP zones have happened, we have put a lot of density in places that have a high likelihood of gentrification and displacement and have not put that similar density in other areas of the city as a way of mitigating the displacement that is happening in areas like the Central District, Rayner Beach, and Ballard. And so it's really important that all across the city, we share density. A lot of this work will happen as we're doing our comprehensive plan, so I don't think it is a singular piece of legislation, but it is a key time period in our city's work around zoning and development that we're moving into and really leveraging the comprehensive plan to end exclusionary zoning and in particular apartment bans is important.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm endorsed by Ellen Durning of the Sightline Institute because I also believe that single families should be allowed to take more density. And and there are some things that we can do, such as making it easier to build adus and datus, duplexes on corners, et cetera. And I have a long list of policy changes in the code that need to change to to facilitate the construction of those desired housing products. However, I do not believe that we had, we should have a one-size-fits-all single-family zone set of changes because different neighborhoods are experiencing different challenges. Some have very large trees that need to be protected, so how can we incentivize the protection of those trees? And have some more density. And in the CD, we've got massive gentrification and displacement. And so we need to be able to, in those zones, facilitate the maintenance of single-family homeownership because those residents, some of, you know, the home is their only asset. And that's what I'm hearing from them, is that they don't want changes that will increase the density of renters when they've got homeowners that are that are struggling to stay in their neighborhoods. So I look forward to seeing the specifics behind this name change because clearly there's something in the works. And I think that we need to be very careful about how they're applied because neighborhoods are different. And and we should be, you know, our two goals are affordable housing.
Thank you. And now we are gonna go to closing statements. So you each have two minutes to give a closing statement. And if you want to address anything that you didn't get to address during the questions, and we will start with Sarah.
Well, I'll just say thank you very much for all of you coming out on a Sunday afternoon. I appreciate it. Look, the stakes are high in this election, and there, as you've heard today, there is a very clear contrast in this race. And we've already mentioned some of them, but basically, look, the extremist policies of this city council haven't really worked. Just look around the city. And and especially, they haven't helped the most vulnerable people. I do have very specific policy goals and proposals to to help people stay in their homes, to help Black and Brown-owned business owners hang on to their businesses and create new jobs. Economic recovery is one of my top priorities because I am concerned about jobs and and the small businesses that that have, that generate 70% of the jobs in the private sector. But look, we've got a majority activist council right now, and I think that what's really needed is a is a leader who is going to listen to constituents, answer emails, and and really dig into policy minutia to make sure that we are getting Seattle on the right track. And that's why I'm endorsed by the Seattle Times, firefighters, ironworkers, machinists, plumbers, and pipe fitters, the laborers, as well as police reform leaders, Reverend Harriet Walden, who's founder of the Mothers for Police Accountability, Victoria Beach of the African-American Community Advisory Council. This is a broad range of people that see someone with progressive and pragmatic experience would be good on the council right now. And so I I ask that you go to my website and check out my positions and policy proposals, and Nathan will pop in the way to contact me going forward. So thank you very much for your attention and caring for the city that we love.
Thank you. Nikita?
Well, first of all, thank you for spending a Sunday afternoon listening to a bunch of talking heads on your Zoom. I don't take that energy for granted, and I greatly appreciate it. I am running for Seattle City Council because I believe that we need a council willing to put in place the solutions that are commensurate with the crises we are facing. I am the pragmatic community leader that you're looking for. I have worked on the front lines of the housing affordability and homelessness crisis, in particular with our young people and families, helping them navigate a very challenging system and a lack of affordable housing in our region. I worked as an attorney who has done eviction cases, an executive director over one of our region's most innovative diversion programs, and an adjunct professor at Seattle University School of Law. I am also a community organizer and fully intend to bring my experience organizing in community into council chambers because there are many marginalized and vulnerable community members who deserve the opportunity to use their own voices for policymaking. I believe that the way a candidate campaigns is emblematic of the way that they will be a servant on our elected council. And that is what we're there to do, to serve. Through community listing posts, door knocking, and many community organizing opportunities and mutual aid, we have been in relationship, talking with our community members and building a foundation to ensure that when we get into council, we are lifting up policies that have been generated by the grassroots and respond to the material conditions of our most vulnerable Seattle lights. I do not think that housing for all, accessible and affordable transportation, a Green New Deal with promising workforce development and progressive revenue generation is that radical or extreme. I think it's exactly where our city needs to go. That's why I'm endorsed by the MLK Labor Council, the Urbanist, the Stranger, our Seattle Education Association, Protex 17, Councilmember Girmay Zahalai, and many others in our region, building a broad coalition who wants to see our city be truly progressive and accessible.
All right, well, thank you both, Sarah Nelson, Nikita Oliver, candidates for Seattle City Council, Position Nine. And thank you again to Teresa Miskata and Ken Wilson in Position Eight. And thanks to the Queen and Community Council and everybody who tuned in today. And I am going to turn it back over to, I believe, to Beth to wrap this up.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you so much. I mean, that was, that was a great community conversation. Thank you so much, Erica, and thank you for the candidates for your time. What I said in the chat was there were some questions that we didn't get answered. I'm gonna just shoot that chat to the candidates because I think it'd be great if you can just take those questions for your digestion. And we will see everybody back here again, same time next Sunday for the mayoral and the city attorney. And we welcome Ken, Nikita, Sarah, and Teresa to join us as well, to hear that dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be there.